So Margaret, we are waiting on just two members, Jerry and Julie, but we do have a quorum.
Yeah, I'd like to just in respect for the Commissioner and for Mr. Pittsford, who is attending again, and we've missed him over the last few meetings. Just like to wait a few minutes, and if it gets to be too long, then we'll begin the meeting because we do have a quorum. But let's just give it about a three to five minute delay in our start time, if that's okay. Thank you. Should we do the? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting of the Monroe County Plan Commission to Order. Today is Tuesday, May 17th, and this is a hybrid meeting. Thank, welcome everybody who's participating on Zoom as well. Director Nestor Jalen, would you please call the roll?
Sure, let me go ahead and call the roll. Margaret Clemens here. Tron and Ray Randolph.
Here.
Bernie Garitas.
Here.
Jeff McKim.
Here.
Dee Owens. Jerry Pittsford.
Here.
Jim Stainbrook.
Here.
Julie Thomas.
Here.
Amy Thompson.
Yeah.
And we do not have any representatives from the city attending, so we have eight members in a quorum.
And would you be so kind as to introduce the evidence?
Sure. I would like to introduce the following items into the evidence. The Monroe County zoning ordinance has adopted and amended. The Monroe County Comprehensive Plan has adopted and amended. The Monroe County Subdivision Control Ordinance has adopted and amended. The Monroe County Plan Commission Rules of Procedure has adopted and amended. And the cases that were legally advertised and scheduled for a hearing on tonight's schedule.
Move, we adopt the evidence as read.
I'll call the roll. Tron and Ray Randolph.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Jim Stainbrook.
Yes.
Julie Thomas.
Yes.
Amy Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, and on tonight's agenda, the one item has been continued by the petitioner. And we have on our agenda a rather lengthy discussion about the Comprehensive Development Plan Ordinance. And I hope that one of my colleagues here would move that we hear the new business, King's Road, in the interest of the public.
Yes. To that end, I'd move that we revise tonight's agenda to make new business first and administrative business second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, and just so that the public is aware, there was unfinished business. The Rush Rust Road Sliding Scale Subdivision, that was continued by the petitioner. So if you're here tonight for the Rust Road Sliding Scale, that will not be heard tonight on tonight's agenda. But the motion is to move up the King's Road Farm Rezone up to first place on the agenda, and I'll go ahead and call the roll. Bernie Garitas.
Sure. Yes.
Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Jim Stainbrook.
Yes.
Julie Thomas.
Yes.
Amy Thompson.
Yes.
Tron and Ray Randolph.
Yes.
Margaret Clemens.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, and there are minutes to be approved by the committee. Is there, has everybody had a chance to look them over, and is there a motion to approve?
Move, we approve the minutes for January 18th and February 15th, 2022. Second.
What was this second?
February 15th. There's one correction. I'll reach out on February minutes, but outside of that, I second it.
Okay.
I have to abstain on one of them. Does it matter? Can I vote abstention on the 15th because I wasn't present?
Okay, if you'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion and prove them separately.
It's just a motion for division of the question. We can, we can vote separately.
Okay. All right, and Tron, your motion still stands if I do it separately?
Yes.
Okay, I'll run through them separately. The motion is to approve the minutes from the January 18th, 2022 meeting. Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Jim Stainbrook.
Yes.
Julie Thomas.
Abstain.
Amy Thompson.
Yes.
Margaret Clemens.
Yes.
Tron and Ray Randolph.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
Okay, so the minutes from January 18th are approved seven to zero, and then a move to approve the February 15th, 2022 minutes. Jerry Pittsford.
Abstain.
Jim Stainbrook.
Yes.
Julie Thomas.
Yes.
Amy Thompson.
Yes.
Margaret Clemens.
Yes.
Tron and Ray Randolph.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes were approved, seven and one abstention.
Okay, well, we're moving quickly now to the first item on the revised agenda, and that is new business, item number one, REZ-22-3. And this is King's Road Farm Rezone from RE 2.5 to AgRR. And this concerns one 19.12 plus or minus acre parcel in Benton South Township, Section 31 at 55707 East King's Road, parcel number 53-06-31-400-002.000-003. And I believe that this will be presented by Ms. Bearman or Mr. Myers.
Mr. Myers is out of the office this week, so I'll go ahead and present this case.
Okay, great, thank you, Jackie.
Yes, thank you for the introduction. So this petition is a rezone for the Agriculture Rural Reserve District, as was mentioned. And first, we have a summary of the prior meetings that this case has gone towards, just to get an idea of what the recommendations have been to date. So first, I went to the Plan Review Committee on April 14th, 2022. The Plan Review Committee did offer their support for the rezone. There was a request that it would go to the Historic Preservation Board of Review, and so that was one of the recommendations that the PRC had moving forward. And then there was also a review of the, what's called the Shard database, which is the historic inventory, and we noted that the farmhouse and barn structures were considered contributing in that database. And then the petitioner communicated to the Plan Review Committee that short-term rentals would be what they were seeking the rezone for, and that that would provide enough revenue for a potential restoration or preservation of the other historic structures on the property. So the Historic Preservation Board met twice to review this petition and overall offered their support. There will be a condition discussed at the end that they provided at last night's meeting. And so one of the main takeaways is that the Historic Preservation Board would like this property to seek a rezone to the Historic Preservation Overlay District in a not concurrent with this rezone, but if this rezone is approved, then they would like to see that as a written commitment to be added after two years, within two years of the rezone approval for AgRR. And we'll discuss that a little bit more. So just a little bit of background, so this is a zoning map amendment to rezone from a state residential 2.5 to Agriculture Rural Reserve, which also requires a two and a half acre minimum. The purpose, as the petitioner has written in a letter, is The purpose, as the petitioner has written in a letter, is to provide the zoning to convert the existing single-family residential unit on the property to be utilized as a tourist home or cabin, which is a short-term rental. And just a reminder, a short-term rental is for a period less than thirty days. Properties in the county that can be rented for longer than that do not have to seek out a tourist home or cabin use. So the definition for tourist home or cabin, something that we wanted to bring up, since there has been a lot of interest from neighbors regarding this petition. So it is a building or portion thereof in which four or fewer guest rooms are furnished to the public for a short-term lodging agreement, and it's subject to Special Condition Number forty-eight. But as the Plan Commission knows and the county commissioners, ultimately, this is a rezone to Agriculture Rural Reserve, so we should consider this for all the uses that are under the AgRR zoning district, not just the intended purpose of the rezone, which is a tourist home. So there's an existing structure, a single-family on the site, twenty-six hundred nine square feet, about a thirteen hundred forty-four square foot barn, a six hundred forty-six square foot storage structure utility shed, about a four hundred sixty square foot utility shed, and two hundred eighty square foot utility shed. So just a reminder that if the Plan Commission reviews this rezone and offers a recommendation, that this would ultimately go to the Board of Commissioners to make a final decision. And so if this rezone is approved and the petitioner would like to proceed with a tourist home, then they will be required to meet all the site plan requirements under Chapter eight fifteen, which includes highway review, planning review, and building review if needed. And so if the property is denied a rezone request, then it's just going to continue its use likely as a single-family residence. So here's a location of the property off of King's Road in Benton South Township. And this is, the property on the right is the slope map. They're not proposing any new structures at this time, just a internal conversion of the single-family residents on the site. And the current zoning here is Agriculture Rural Reserve, and then you can also see the Eco Area Three overlay. And then in the Comprehensive Plan, this is listed as a rural transition area. And we have a few aerial pictometry photos of the site off of King's Road, and then also some on-the-ground photos where you can see the driveway access to the existing single-family residents, as well as the limestone walls that line the driveway. And here's some photos of the single-family residents as well, in the barn. And then some other photos of the property itself. It's a fairly large property, so just getting an idea of the character of the area. This is part of a minor subdivision, King's Road, so this is one plat, one lot in that platted subdivision for consideration, and the petitioner's letter is also listed. The, in the packet, you'll find the permitted uses under the Agriculture Rural Reserve Zoning District. The RE two point five zoning district, the uses are listed under the Chapter eight thirty-three table. So there were several letters of support. I believe these were added after the packet had gone out. I believe there are six in total of different people that reached out in support of this petition. And I believe notably that some of the support letters, just when we're looking at remonstrance or support, that the addresses of the people that are offering the support may be further away. And the letters of remonstrance are of people that seem to be a little bit closer in proximity, but the petitioner could also discuss that, since some of these are from business email addresses. So here are some more support letters as well. As I mentioned, there are six in total, and apologies if these didn't make it in the packet. These were sent a little bit later after the packet had already gone out. And then there is a remonstrance letter in the packet, and it's primarily one letter that's describing just the nature of their opposition, and then a few photos. And then it is signed by several neighbors in the area off of King's Road, Nathan Way, Mahala Way, and I believe, Ariel Way, so those are in proximity to King's Road. Okay, and then we discussed a little bit about the Historic Preservation Board of Review condition. And so put together a recommendation for this rezone. So staff is recommending forwarding a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners based on findings of fact, and with the compatibility of the County Comprehensive Plan with the following condition, that the petitioner submit a written commitment, that the property owner submit an application for the Historic Preservation Overlay within two years of a rezone approval. And if the Historic Preservation Overlay is not applied for within two years, the owner agrees to not remonstrate against an overlay application prompted by the Monroe County Historic Preservation Board of Review. I'll also note that this is the preliminary hearing of this item, and so if, and it was not noticed to have a waiver of final hearing, so this is a preliminary hearing of this item. And I can take any questions.
Mr. McKim?
Thank you, yes. So I just want to understand the petitioner's plan. There's a house, there's a residence and a barn. Is the, is the intention to turn the barn into the tourist home or to, and to have the petitioner live on-site? Or is it to turn both into the, a tourist home?
As of right now, the request, it is to turn the single-family residence into the tourist home, and the barn is not to be touched at this point, per the petitioner.
So the petitioner is not intending to live on-site along with the tourist home?
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Do other members of the Plan Commission have questions for staff? Mr. Stainbrook?
Did I inadvertently raise my hand or anything, or?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing.
Oh, my goodness, thank, thank you very much, yes, and I was, had my volume turned up as I'm, you know. Anyway, I've been following along here and with Jeff here, and I believe I had asked, so with an interest in Jeff's question. I believe when I asked the petitioner about this, they indicated that while they're not living on the premise there with the single-family home, that the gentleman said he was in some, well, proximity again to where they could, could look after things, because I, I had a similar question that may have been implicit in Jeff's question, but thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So we turn now to the petitioner. Oh, yes, Mr. Enright Randolph?
Yes, due to the staff's recommendation, I'm kind of curious, how much weight is that recommendation based off of the historic designation commitment?
Is, just to rephrase the question, are you asking if the written commitment is severable from the recommendation of positive?
Yeah, from the planning department and staff.
Sure, so I think that the recommendation for positive recommendation fits within the Comprehensive Plan, and the written commitment request came from the Historic Preservation Board of Review, and we do see that the property is considered contributing, so it's something that we want to recommend, but it's not necessarily a requirement under the findings that we found for the property.
Okay, that gets at the question. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if that wasn't part of a commitment from the petitioner with staff, or a recommendation as a commitment from the petitioner, and it not be a new condition we're looking at today, would staff still give a positive recommendation?
So if the Plan Commission were to forward a positive recommendation with no written commitment?
I'm just trying to figure out where the staff is, the Monroe County Planning Department staff, and where the Historic Preservation Commission or Committee is, and how those kind of intertwine. We've been seeing more of this with potential overlays tied into rezone requests. And I just trying to kind of distinguish those two from where the staff recommendation is outside of the Historic Preservation Committee. Is it committee or commission?
Yeah, Board of Review, yeah. So the planning department staffs the Historic Preservation Board of Review, and when, when we're looking at a petition, if it's considered to be contributing or notable or anything like that, we're always encouraging people to go ahead and preserve structures. The recommendation to rezone the property with the Historic Preservation Overlay within two years is a little bit outside of what we typically do. I think as of late, there's been more requests to have petitioners that are willing to rezone for the Historic Preservation Overlay. But I do think that the petitioner could speak to, you know, I believe they're agreeable to this commitment, and so that's some, that's a win-win certainly for staff.
Well, I love the win-win statement there then, so thank you. I know that's a difficult question, but I'm trying to get some sense of kind of seeing this more frequently, kind of where the planning department staff stands, and then obviously where the Historic Preservation Board of Review stand.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Enright Randolph. So we turn now to the petitioner and/or the petitioner's representative. And if you'd come to the podium, you have fifteen minutes to make your case. And if you would please, do they sign in? If you would sign in, identify yourself, and then speak to us about what you want to do with this property. And do you have the timer for the fifteen minutes?
Yeah, I can put it on my phone. Oh, tech services actually is on it, thank you. Is your, could you?
It should have a green light. Whoops.
Okay, green light.
Thank you.
I thought I understood your, your question, that we had a positive recommendation from the planning staff before the initial review meeting, before we met with the Historical Board, the, the timing on these meetings. So our review meeting on May fourteenth, they told us that the planning staff had given a positive review, and then the review committee gave us a positive recommendation with a recommendation that we meet with the Historical Planning Society, our board, and met with historical. Excuse me, sir, are we able to address that they can't hear in the back?
Yes, people are having difficulty hearing you. If you could please speak into the microphone a little bit better.
Okay.
Okay, I think that might be better.
Okay, so the, I met with the Historical Preservation Board, and they were supportive, but they wanted me to learn more about what a Historical Preservation Overlay entailed. So I was given some information about that. It seemed that my, my wife and I, our goal of preserving the property, the historic property, seemed to overlay with their mission of preserving historical properties. They did request that we would give a verbal or a written commitment to apply for Historical Preservation Overlay within two years of, of the approval of an AgRR zoning change. And we are agreeable to those terms. It seemed to be in line with what our goals are with the property. I just, our plans with the property, when we purchased the farm, our goal, our goals, initial goals of that were to actually build a home on the back, one of those back plats, and then manage the, and turn the farmhouse into an Airbnb. We were, we've learned a lot about zoning rules and zoning, zoning laws, and we were not aware that there, that the zoning was RE two point five or what that meant. Since when we were made aware of that, then I've called and talked to the planning department, Drew Myers. He informed me that we were zoned RE two point five, that that wouldn't be appropriate to have an Airbnb short-term rental on that property. And informed me of the Chapter eight oh two, which allowed tourist homes in an AgRR zoning. Of the others, the other zones that allow tourist homes, it seemed that the AgRR was the most appropriate for this property since it's twenty-acre plat with surrounded by hayfields and has barns and a couple barns and a couple sheds, and felt that would be the most appropriate zoning to get to our goal of using the property as a short-term rental. We do not plan on living on that plat that we were planning on managing. It is a short-term rental. We do have external, there have been some concerns of the, of my neighbors about whether they're, they were gonna, we were going to rent this out to fraternities and sororities to have parties, and we definitely are not going to do that. We actually are trying to market this and rent it to families coming down for either short trips to Monroe County, or parents coming to visit their children in college perhaps. We currently, we are marketing it as a long-term rental, thirty-day stay or longer on Airbnb, and our marketing clearly states, no, no parties are allowed. We can monitor this because we have external cameras, ring doorbells, and external cameras monitoring the parking lot, the park, our, our driveway, and we feel that that's, gives us some sense of knowledge on what's going on on the property. So if we do have somebody who decides to break the rules and throw a big party, that we can take steps immediately to remedy that. I've been told by my legal counsel that with short-term renters, if they, if they do break those rules, that we have the ability to, to have them evicted, they don't have long-term rental rights. So we want to, we want to protect the neighborhood, protect the property, and protect the, preserve the peaceful, tranquil nature of the neighborhood. It is a beautiful area. The, our property itself has twenty acres, and then those surrounding forty-some acres divided into four plats. But the, there are, there were some specific things that I wanted to point out. The, the petition that went around made some specific points, and I just wanted to try to reassure my neighbors. And that, you were, first, they, they mentioned that we, that this AgRR was not an appropriate use for a tour home that wasn't the primary use for an AgRR rezone. It is clearly stated in, in Chapter eight oh two that it is a, is a use of, of the, of that zone. And it's why we, after meeting and talking with Drew Myers, why we decided to go to the rezone to AgRR. There was a claim in, in the petition that this was a quote, "end runaround," end quote, to try to sound like, I felt like we were trying to be sneaky about this. I want to, I think, I feel like we've been transparent with the planning committee and with the neighbors when they've asked what our goals are with the property. We, we do want to turn it into a short-term rental. My goal is that if this does get approved, it's a short-term rental, that the neighbors won't know the difference, that it'll be a, we will rent to peaceful people that will not throw parties. We are able to screen through the rental process based on prior renting, renting history. You know, Airbnb, when you rent a property on Airbnb, the, the owners of the property you rent, they, after you check out, you are raided by them. And if you destroy their property or do, or a bad tenant, then, and get bad reviews, then we don't intend to rent to people who have any bad reviews. They have to have perfect reviews to rent our property. So I'm certainly hope that that alleviates the concern of throwing parties, the fact that we are marketing that we, we don't allow parties, and that we will be monitoring the property, even though we do live physically a couple of miles away from the property. There was a claim in the, in the petition that this was not an appropriate use of the property for the nature and character of the surrounding properties. And I, I just disagree. It's not a densely populated area. It's a 20-acre lot. It's a very peaceful, beautiful area that would, I think, a lot of people would enjoy to relax and, and, and enjoy our, what we have to offer in Monroe County. There was a concern in the petition about increasing noise and, and decreasing safety of the neighborhood. And I am committed to maintaining a quiet and safe vacation rental. I do not believe that this use of this property would reduce anyone's property values. There's, we're absolutely not going to rent to college kids or allow any parties of, any large parties of any sort. I'm not sure how, several of the neighbors have told me they were told that we were going to be renting this out as fraternity, for fraternity parties or sorority parties. I'm not sure how that was started, because we had a conversation with a neighbor who I think started this petition in September of last year to let her know that we would not allow any parties on the, on the property. And then all of a sudden, neighbors started telling us that we, they were going to, they heard we're going to allow fraternity parties. And that's, that will not happen. There's, we will not allow that to happen in that property. They say that the property is suitable for large parties. And while we agree it may be suitable for large parties, we simply won't allow large parties on the property by short-term renters. There was also concern about the retaining or the walls surrounding the entrance and exit of the driveway. This wall was erected by the prior owners 20 years ago. And we had not heard any of these concerns in the last few years. And I spoke with Doug Dayhoff and he said he had not heard of any concerns about that wall for 20 years since he built it. I don't agree that it's a danger to the neighborhood. There have been zero accidents in front of the property and zero accidents on the road or at the entrance to the neighborhood at 46 and King's Road. There was another claim in this petition that we are acting in bad faith, claiming that we've been renting this property out short-term without the approval of the county. And I would like to say that that's false. We've never rented the property out short-term. We have allowed a select family and friends to stay there for short-term for free. And they, I would say that the, they have not, those families that have stayed there for free, short-term have, have not had any concerns about the safety of the entry, entrance and exit of the driveway or accessing the property from 46 or King's Road. And our Airbnb listing clearly states that it's a 30-day minimum stay. There was another comment about a, apparently a verbal commitment made by the prior owners some years ago between the prior owners and some unnamed neighbors about a, that the Dayhoffs would not seek further rezoning. And I started to comment on a conversation that I wasn't a part of, but it certainly wasn't recorded as in a legal agreement or disclosed as a legally binding agreement when we purchased the property. There was another letter by Doctors Gerald and Susan Pugh, and I would like to respond to their concerns. They were concerned that a short-term rental would increase traffic in the neighborhood. And I believe that it would be the exact opposite. I believe the short-term rental would decrease traffic because the property would not be occupied 365 days a year. They were also concerned that the Agar R zone is not compatible with the neighborhood. And I would like to point out that there are Agar R zoning already in the neighborhood. The, the property at the end of King's Road and James Road are both zoned Agar R per the Elevate Parcel Application. They ask a question whether we would expand commercial activity. And we have no plans to expand commercial activity. In fact, as we've met with the Historical Preservation Board twice now, and we plan to apply for Historical Preservation Overlay. And our goals are only to generate the amount of revenue to cover our operating expenses and hopefully be able to fix up the barn. So I do not want to turn the barn at this point. I don't have a goal of turning the barn into another Airbnb. I would, it's in disrepair. I think it needs to be painted. The, I would like to turn the hayloft into maybe a game area for guests, that they could go up there and play ping pong or air hockey. Right now, it's, we're not letting guests into the barns because if they go up in the hayloft, it needs to be repaired. There's some boards that are, I feel are unsafe. Overall, we desire to be good neighbors to all, or all the other property owners in the neighborhood. We're committed to ensuring the preservation of the farm and the, and the home and also preserving the peaceful, tranquil atmosphere of the neighborhood. I, I really love the neighborhood and I love the farm and I want to preserve it the way, the way it is possible. It's just expensive to preserve it. And to the rezon to Agar R and allowing us to rent it as a short-term rental would allow us to, I feel to increase the revenue and cover the operating expenses and hire some, a contractor who can preserve the barns and fix them up. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Do members of the Plan Commission have questions for Mr. Voorhees? Yes, Ms. Thompson? Could you turn on your microphone, sorry?
What is your plan for maximum occupancy when you're advertising with Airbnb or?
We have it advertised currently as seven maximum occupancy, but I'm open, there are three bedrooms and then an extra room with a futon. Three, there is a bedroom with a king-size bed, two bedrooms with two queen-size beds and then a futon and an upstairs bedroom.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
I'm just curious about your plans for renovation as to whether you're interested in just maintaining the structure or whether you're interested in renovating it with an eye toward maintaining its historical nature?
I would like to maintain the historical nature of the barns and all of the external buildings. And there's, I don't intend at this point to change the use, plan to apply for Historical Overlay, at which point if we did, we would need to seek their approval for adaptive reuse.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Voorhees? Yes, Mr. McKinnon?
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question of staff that's related to something that, so thank you very much, first of all. I guess my question is, what protection? Oh, so I, I totally take the petitioner at his word that he wants to maintain a quiet, no, no-party atmosphere in his, in his Airbnb. What, what protection does the public have, if any? If the petition decides to sell later and, which could certainly happen, could the next owner, I mean, are there, essentially are there any restrictions other than general noise ordinances that can be placed on or are already part of the, the ordinance that would give the public some assurance?
As it relates to noise, I think that would just be a noise ordinance complaint. But I also think that Drew put together the conditions for a tourist home. So maybe those would be helpful to, to walk through a little bit about what the regulations are. So it says that the lot size must meet or exceed the minimum for the area in all infrastructure facilities. So that includes the septic system and the driveway has to be meeting the requirements. And then it also says it shall be located no closer than 200 feet from any adjoining principal use structure, not used as a tourist home or from the adjoining property setback line if, if there is no principal use structure next door. And then any pool or spa facilities must meet state or local Board of Health requirements. Parking only on paved or gravelled driveways. No parking on the street or the road. One parking space per guest room. No parking of any vehicles in any yard or setback area. And then rules have to be posted outside near the main entrance. And there must be a 24-hour contact number. And it says that is related to noise restrictions, solid waste management rules, fishing license rules, et cetera. And that there's a diagram of the property boundary lines, designated parking map, smoke detectors, and all solid waste must be removed from the property and no more than two guests per guest room.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Voorhees? Okay, thank you, Mr. Voorhees. We'll hear now from the public.
Thank you. I mentioned it to Jackie that we, we had talked to Drew about asking for a waiver for the next meeting, whether or not that was what we had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there members of the public who are here who would like to speak in support of this petition? If so, please come to the podium. Or if you're participating on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand so that you could be recognized to speak in support of the petition. Or if you're calling in by telephone, press star nine on your telephone to be recognized. So there's no one. Now, we will hear from the members of the public who are here to speak in opposition to this petition. And each speaker will have a limited three minutes. And if you would come up to the podium, sign in. And then when you begin to speak, your three minutes will begin. So if there are members of the public who are here to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the podium. And in order to speak, just sign it, your name. And then when you begin to speak, the timer will begin for three minutes. Thank you for coming tonight. And there's a significant airflow issue. So if you would be so kind, when you do begin to speak, to hold the microphone close to your, wow, thank you very much.
Before I begin my speech, I would like to make two corrections. In the petition letter that was sent of those who opposed, and we are all nearby, there were 38 signatures. So we're talking about 93% of the neighbors in close proximity, excuse me, are opposed. The second thing I would like to mention is that I was almost hit by one of the persons inhabiting Dr. Warheys's house as he was coming down the road. And because of the wall, the stone wall could not see me because my driveway is almost lined up with this. And as a result, he almost T-boned me. It was a near miss.
Okay, thank you. Your three minutes has begun. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. I speak to you tonight as one of the 30, 93% of neighbors in opposition to the rezoning. The petitioner has said a lot tonight about his intention to promote historical and/or preservation, wildlife preservation. Unfortunately, it is very difficult to see how the rezoning petition furthers the cause of those two very noble aims. He is asking for a rezoning of a relatively small portion of his land, a little more than 19 acres, from residential to agriculture. This would not permit, would not prevent further housing development on the remaining 40 or so acres which are zoned RE 2.5 and therefore could be sold. Nor would it prevent a future owner from making significant changes to the property. The Historic Preservation Designation, which would apply to the two structures, the barn and farmhouse, would also be, as Drew Myers has told me, perfectly compatible with the current zoning. So why rezon? The petition clearly states that the objective of the rezoning of a small portion of the farm is for the purpose of a tourist cabin. There would be no resident owner on the premises as the owner now lives in Devonshire subdivision, some miles away. It would be a commercial enterprise, an LLC, in an area in which zoning laws normally prohibit commercial enterprises. And it would likely draw clientele who despite one's best intentions could easily become disruly and disruptive. Commercial enterprises such as these can charge upwards of $1,000 to $2,000 or more a night during major events such as football games and Little 500. And with the proximity to IU, the guest cabin can be full every weekend, if not during the week as well. Furthermore, any attempt to designate the guest cabin as having five-star guests can own, can only, cannot regulate guest behavior when the owner is not living on the property. Other barns have owners on the property. Expenses in renovating the farmhouse and barn with the HP designation could be covered under current zoning, existing zoning, because of substantial depreciation on the property for renovation, resulting in the owner paying lower taxes. There are grants from Indiana to help defray the cost of renovating these structures. And long-term rentals that could help critical housing shortage.
Your time is up. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, may I just close? In closing, I submit that this is not really for the purpose of historic preservation, but for the purpose of establishing a commercial guest cabin, and I strongly oppose.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So sir, if you would come to the podium, sign in and identify yourself and then your three minutes will begin.
Okay, my name is Tim Fort. I lived on Mahalia Way at the end of the Mahalia Road. First of all, I want to say that I understand the desire to keep a historic spot. I grew up on a farm in western Illinois. The house is now 160-year-old stone house. My parents have been gone for about 25 years now. And my siblings and I have been trying to preserve that for the last 25 years of our lives. And we struggle with it too. It's hard to do because we don't live there. And so trying to make sure that it's kept up, keeping up with the expenses, it's very difficult to do. But I fear that what's happened here is that there's a contradiction that makes this impossible to actually fulfill. The entire premise, there's two parts. One is, there's been a lot of talk about a party and restricting parties. But one is, what is the definition of a party? Is that two people? Is that four people? Is it 150 people? And the only way that you can determine whether or not a party is going to be excessive is if you're able to monitor it properly. If you're not present to be able to monitor properly, then you're going to have to rely on external cameras and mechanisms in order to be able to observe what is happening. I can't imagine that if that is the case, you are not buying a lawsuit for violation of constitutional privacy rights. I mean, how do you do it? You can't go to a hotel. You can't be looking into people's rooms with cameras. There's laws against that. And if you're not present, if you don't have someone that's there who's monitoring it, who can hear, who can call out, who can stop and say, quiet down. If relying on electronic mechanisms, I think you're buying another mechanism for a lawsuit that will undermine the entire capability of maintaining this in a quiet way that is, that is mindful and respectful, which I take your word that you're trying to do. I get that. I, I'll give you credit for that. But I don't think it can possibly work without buying another lawsuit that dooms the entire thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ford. And the next person, if you would come up and sign in and identify yourself, and then you'll have three minutes to speak in opposition. It's still off.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Dana Carpenter. My husband, Eric Swens, and I have lived on King's Road for 29 years now. We have lived there since it was a little unknown road in the country before Bel Air was even platted. We've been there all along. We first lived at 5491 East Kings Road. We now live at 5431. We still own our starter home and the house in between 5475. We rent 5475 and 5491 as long term rentals. So that gives us a considerable investment in the, in the neighborhood. We have had an Airbnb next door on the other side on the house just south of us. So we have some experience with short term rentals. People don't have to have the party at the property. I have had the experience of hearing people shrieking out in the street, out on King's Road, not knowing whether it was in distress or in laughter and going out and saying, do I need to call the police? And they're like, oh, no, no, we're sorry, and stumbling back to the house. People who come to a short term rental come because they are usually celebrating something. Again, as said, the Little Five, the football games, homecoming, whatever. And that means people are indeed partying, even if they're partying off the property. Now, I don't know how having a few cameras around the place is going to stop the people who are staying there from overindulging because they're reliving old times. I do know that I have dealt with drunken revelers at a short term rental next door. I rent to two, two young families with little children. And the people who now live in the house that used to be an Airbnb also have a young child they now own. And we don't really need strangers coming in and out. I, that limit of seven, I'm pretty sure that a lot of the people who would come would have other people at the university, students that they have come to visit, who would come back with them to see mom and dad. Is Mr. Voorhees really going to forbid that? If Mr. Voorhees is out to dinner, is he going to be checking his Ring camera every 10 minutes? That's not really much of an assurance to me. But the, the big thing is, we, we treasure not only the peace and quiet on King's Road, and everyone who has come to look at one of my rental properties has commented how wonderful the peace and quiet of King's Road is, but also the safety. I don't need more people coming back from parties drunk, driving down a road with which they are not familiar.
Thank you. Your time is, thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Is there another person here who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Please come up, sign in, identify yourself, and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Don Hollinger. I live at 5525 East Kings Road. My property actually adjoins the Voorhees property at 5577. We are separated by an 8.2 acre conservation easement, Sycamore Valley Land Trust that separates or doesn't separate our properties, but exists between and is part of the 19 plus acres that they're seeking the additional or the change to egg RR. As my understanding, under the 2.5 ER current zoning, while the lot sizes are similar in restrictions, historic preservation and those still exist and can be applied under the current zoning, they don't require the change in zone to egg RR in order to secure the historic designation of that property. I think the long term concern is, do we open the door for, once this zoning has changed? What do we? What's our recourse should other owners come along or the chance to take this 19 plus acres? And, and acquire additional structures and do expand the use. The egg RR's primary function as a zone was agricultural. While there is a, that opening to allow short term rentals, its primary purpose was not for short term rentals. It's available for that, but its zoning purpose was primarily agricultural. The estate residential 2.5 that all of the surrounding properties, 90% of the properties fall under, continues that agricultural rural estate feel, the quietness, the ecology of the area and its protection, it takes all that into account as egg RR does. But egg RR has that one little window. And I, I think we should be cautious of what window or what doors do we open? When we put that kind of a new zone right in the middle of a surrounding area that is almost entirely zone estate residential. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Thanks for coming tonight, sir.
Okay, my name is Steve or Stephen Gable. I live at 5578 East Kings Road. I am the partner of Paula Sunderman, from whom you've already heard. It's my intention to speak only to one aspect of the issue here, and that is to the issue of how the petitioner would go about screening possible renters. I know that he intends to screen these renters and screen them well. But I have spent my entire career in the insurance business. And I know from experience that screening people is far more difficult than what he seems to think. It requires far more than simply a B and B rating. I want to point out that this is one of the major reasons for zoning laws, which for the most part look askance at short term rentals being done within residential neighborhoods. So what assurance do we have if this property is rezoned? What assurance do we have that the present petitioner will screen well? And more important perhaps, what assurance do we have that any future owner will screen well? Thank you.
Mr. Gable, would you please sign in before you leave the podium? Thank you. Okay, would the next person, please come up to the podium and sign in? And as the three minutes is nearing completion, would other people please come up to the podium so that we can try to expedite the testimony time? Is there another person who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? I see none. Is there anyone who is participating by Zoom who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Yes, I see that there's a Mr. Osborne who would like to speak if tech services could unmute him.
Hello, thank you. I just want to respond to one of the points raised earlier regarding the Airbnb rating being used as a filtering mechanism to ensure that only, you know, high quality renters were at the property. I've rented from Airbnb many times and the only way that feedback is recorded for a guest is if both the guest and the host both leave feedback mutually. So the idea that, you know, a guest could show up at someone's Airbnb and trash the place, and then the host would leave negative feedback is not accurate because again, both parties have to leave feedback in order for that to register. Excuse me. The other point I want to make is that there are no sidewalks in the area. There's a, or on the road generally. There's a sort of a crumbly sidewalk near the area where the petitioner has the home, but generally, most people walk down the street. And my wife and I have several small children. We live in the neighborhood at 5767 East Kings Road. And we're often out walking and people who are not familiar with this street and neighborhood often come in driving way too fast for the area. And it's been a concern of ours. So, you know, I just want to state that I don't feel like it's our responsibility to, you know, subsidize the commercial enterprise that's being pursued by the petitioner. As he mentioned in his opening remarks, you know, there was a failure of due diligence to understand the zoning implications when he purchased the property. And, you know, sort of after the fact now, we're trying to adjust for that. You know, I understand there's a nominal purpose of historical preservation, but there are no guarantees of that. And so again, I just, you know, want the commission to understand that there's a safety issue here and that it impacts, you know, all of us who are trying to, you know, utilize the environment and be out and walking around in, in safety. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Is there anyone else participating via Zoom who would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Or if you're calling in by telephone, please press star nine to speak. And if there's none, Mr. Voorhees has five minutes in rebuttal.
Thank you, neighbors, for your feedback. I would like to just say that there was one comment about the external cameras being a potentially violation of privacy. These are not internal cameras. We're not looking inside the home. These are just security cameras like exterior. And I, I do feel like I will, they would allow me to monitor a situation of someone breaking the party, the party rules. It's, I, I can't monitor every person, whether they are a long term resident of the neighborhood or a short term runner, their, their behavior, if they're going to drink, if they're going to do illegal activities, drinking and driving or something, I hope that they wouldn't. And I, and, and I don't feel like this is an unsafe use of the property. There have been like zero accidents. I'm, I'm very thankful that Paula Sunderman's experience was a close call and not an accident because there have been zero accidents on this road since I've owned the property. We are committed to using this property as a, a, to keep it a peaceful, tranquil property and not to interfere to cause any type of disruption with the neighbors. I would say that the, there was some points about the, with RE 2.5, we can certainly do historical preservation overlay. It's the, the uses of RE 2.5 are very limited. There's, I could do a long term rental to a single family. The other like permitted uses are like a group home for developmentally delayed, a group home for mentally ill, a group home for five adults, a cemetery or pasture land. And then those are, while are nice uses of the property, they won't allow us to cover the, likely cover the operational costs and to preserve the property as, in its current form. And so, yeah, I do, I think it could, that would be the issue of preserve, preservation also requires some sort of just revenue to be able to preserve, not just a desire to preserve. And I have a desire to preserve the property. I have a desire to be a good neighbor. I have a desire that if this go, if you do approve this rezone and we are able to turn this into a short term renter, rental that, that my other desire would be the neighbors won't be able to tell the difference, that it will be everyone, I know that everyone is very worried about a change and change is a very difficult and scary proposition, but I don't think they'll notice any change if it's rezoned to an agar R. We are going to be very with, with the air, so with the Airbnbs, the other, the other comment was that using the Airbnb their prior rental history. So if someone has zero rental history, that Airbnb allows you to screen them for that. They, they can't rent your property if they have zero history or if they have bad history and we're able to review all of their history before we approve a rental for the property. We've been doing that for the long term renters currently. The I would, I said, one last point I was going to point out is that this Paulo reminded me of this, that the, the petition had 38 names and addresses, but several of them did not sign the petition actually. If you look at the petition, there only, only 21 of those names and addresses actually have signatures. And four of those people that signed the petition have contacted me via text message to tell me after we sent them a letter explaining our position that they no longer support the petition. And so I'm not sure how to, with, with, there's 38 names and addresses, but only 21 of them signed the petition. That would be my final point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Thank you. So we come back now to members of the Plan Commission for further discussion and any concerns that you might have, if you could express them. Mr. McKim?
Yeah. I mean, I think I've already expressed my concern to some degree is that the, the property certainly, although I think the, the current petitioner is certainly sincere. You know, there's always the, the chance that he would, he could sell and we don't know what the next property owner is going to do. I'm also a bit concerned about the property owner not living on site. The last time we considered a tourist home type project was a, a rezone. Actually, I happen to be personally the property owner closest to. And I supported, I not only voted in favor of it, but I spoke at the commissioners meeting as a member of the public in favor of it. I do think, I do like the idea of using short term rental as, as the, as a way of generating revenue to be able to preserve historic structures. In general, I, I support that. I think that's good. But I am troubled by not having a property owner live on site. I think there's just a lot less protection for neighbors in the community. I'm not, you know, I'm interested in what others say. I, my understanding is we, we certainly don't have to, we can certainly continue this to the next meeting. The petitioner is requesting a waiver of final hearing, but we don't have to grant that if we don't want.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, Mr. McKim. I am torn on this one because on the one hand, we, we also have a number of rental properties that are long-term rentals. And the owners may or may not live locally. And so to say because it's a short-term rental, it's different. I'm not sure I buy that. So that's, you know, rentals are allowed, but they have to be long-term. But that doesn't mean that somebody's watching those properties every day. Um, I do have concerns that this does change the nature and structure of a community that's been here a long time. So that is my concern. That seems to be overriding everything. I typically would, would say to Mr. McKim's point that if we wanted to have another hearing, we could. But typically, I only would say that's a good idea if there's more information that we're seeking. And there's not much else that I can learn right now unless somebody sees something that they want more information on. I think we should take a vote tonight. Thank you.
Does anyone to my left have any comments? Mr. Pittsburgh?
Yes. Questions more than anything else. First of all, I, I may have missed it in the packet. How long is the driveway from the road to this residential structure?
I can do that.
I did that earlier. It's approximately 500 feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, 500 feet. Okay. Pretty significant difference, or distance. Then my other question is in the use categories, there's one that's comes, comes up a couple of times. Historic adaptive reuse, what is that?
So historic adaptive reuse is a conditional use that is available to property owners that have a local designation as historic. And typically, what that has meant is that it allows multi-use on the property in the form of like having a single-family residence and a tourist home on the property. That's actually not by right allowed in, under the current zoning ordinance. So I know Mr. McKim was talking about that for another property. That was how they got to that end result.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'd like to correct, if, if that's the length of the drive, more or less, it's 300 to this, this building. 300 feet from, to the building.
Okay, thank you. With the entire length of it, then it was 500. Okay.
And the conditional use does get neighbor notification and it does go to a Board of Zoning Appeals hearing before they would apply for something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Schilling, do we still have maintaining common nuisance ordinance or laws on the books? If, if somebody is, has a property where commonly people are gathering, creating a nuisance that, that can be enforced?
They can enforce that privately if it affects a large enough area, it could be regarded as a public nuisance.
Okay. All right. So there is, there is a mechanism though in law that if people in a residential neighborhood are bothered by the use of a property by an owner that is creating a common nuisance, that there is avenues for redress?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. So, and then the last thing is, is petitioner willing to eliminate any of these permitted uses as a condition of a favorable recommendation?
I'm not sure if that has been discussed with the petitioner through any of the subcommittee meetings, but we could discuss that with the petitioner after.
Okay, good, because I see a lot of uses that may be even more controversial to residential neighborhood than the one we're considering right now. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Pittsburgh. Does anyone else to my left, Mr. Garitas?
So I didn't see in the packet, a, was there anything listed uses for the RE 2.5?
Let me go ahead and pull that up. That's a good point.
Would you do that? I couldn't find it. I saw the Agar Reserve. So while you're looking, you know, I, and I've mentioned this at the PRC, you know, I respect the, the petitioner's necessity, as he, as the family states, that, that they need to, that they need to supplement this home with revenue. And, and, you know, the statement that one of the remonstrators made, I can appreciate 110%. So I, I think that it's a, it's a very common goal. And I think it is a very useful way to sustain the house in a manner that keeps it viable over time because they do dilapidate in a very quick, very rapidly. And I think that having it as party central, having it with people in the home, coming in strangers tearing the house up so then they can just spend more money to repair it, that is contradictory. And I think that one of the remonstrators used that term. I don't think it was in that context, but, but that's the way I see it. Is that, that would not be the goal of the owner to have people come in and tear up their home in order to put more money back in to fix what the people tore up. It just, it's an endless circle and doesn't make sense. The, the question on the, the Tron had with the, the Historic Preservation Board. My question would be on this. Who would pay for that if within two years they would apply for that, that overlay?
So the filing fees are actually free?
Okay. So they would stop to generate drawings or sketches or something?
Correct.
But if, if it would automatically kick into the Historic Preservation Board handling that petition, they may learn something. Why, why wouldn't we just have the ability for the Historic Preservation Board with the non-remonstrance of the owner? Just leave it at that and not put in the, the additional condition that they would apply? And if they don't, then the HP board would be able to make application without remonstrance from the owners. Does that make sense what I'm saying? So that would just be a question I would have. It seems like a double, it seems to be a double requirement that isn't necessary. If they're not going to remonstrate against it and the Historic Preservation Board thinks this is something that, that is necessary and that they would like, then they would, they would carry the can to make that happen. So again, it looks like you've got the RE 2.5 up there.
Yes, so the first column is the RE 2.5 category. So then the uses are on the left side. So Ben breakfast is a conditional use. Cemeteries, permitted use, a church is a conditional use. Crops and pastage, that's basically farming is permitted. Daycare center is conditional. Fire station is a conditional use. Historic adaptive reuse and home occupation are conditional. Parks and playgrounds are permitted. Police stations and public libraries/museums are conditional. As well as a rehabilitative facility is conditional. And then a residential care home for developmentally disabled individually, individuals and residential care home for mentally ill and residential care home for up to five individuals other than developmentally disabled is permitted. And then schools are conditional and single-family detached dwellings are permitted. Swim clubs, tennis clubs are conditional. Utility substations and transmission facilities are permitted and wireless communication facilities are conditional.
So it kind of goes in with what Mr. Pittsburgh was saying. Not the origin of the Mount Terry, but that, you know, there are a lot of uses that, that I see that if it was to be just a commercial enterprise, they could reach out and potentially do something in an RE 2.5 if they were just using the property to make money. But it seems like they're wanting to do it in a way that's consistent with a single-family residential home and still build enough revenue to keep it and, you know, keep the walls from falling in. So I think it's a, I think it's a good petition. I don't think that the HP overlay for them to be forced to do that in two years. I think if the, if the Historic Preservation Board wants to see that happen, they've got the ability to do it through any conditions that we would put on this for, for recommendation of approval of the county commission. Those are my thoughts. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Garitas. Are there any other comments to my left? Okay, I see Mr. Stainbrook has his hand raised and Mr. Stainbrook?
Yes, thank you, Margaret. I will continue to listen. I have no further question. I would like to share my view of this. I find the concerns of the neighbors to be compelling. And I will most definitely vote no with reference to the petition, barring some epiphany of understanding which I most definitely, again, do not anticipate. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, and I'd like to add my own comments here at the end. It matters to me that the neighbors have come out, that there's such a strong concern by the community that surrounds this property, who are, who would like to preserve their way of life and the lifestyle that they invested in with their life savings. And it matters to me that you have spoken in opposition to this petition. And it also matters to me, some of the permitted uses in the Agar R that could take place downstream if this zoning change takes place. And so I, I myself find myself convinced by the neighbors and their concerns. So that being said, I think it's time for either a motion. Yes, Mr. Tron and Wright-Randall?
Sorry, I wasn't quick enough before you went to the left. Um, for comments. And I guess I just kind of have a final comment. Jackie, if you could bring up the permitted uses for the AGRR? You can't, oh. Sorry.
Yes, let me bring up the permitted use list for Agar R. And also while I'm pulling that up, I want to note that I did check back at the public notice that was sent out. And this was not listed as requesting a waiver. So this will have to receive a second hearing.
Well, I could just turn off my mic, but I'll go ahead and finish my comment.
Okay.
So here's all the new uses from the ones that we just covered. Would you go to the proposed zoning map? So I, I think we're just at this point in time where there's a lot of rezones coming. But we're in the middle of a consolidated development ordinance or county development ordinance. Went through a couple of different names. And I'm really kind of curious, this being identified as a rural transition area, would this be a permitted use in the new comprehensive or in the new ordinance? So I'm a little hesitant to want to weigh in now when I think in hopes with our new director and our new assistant director, we might be finishing up this ordinance rewrite. And this might just make a little more sense then. I've recommended, you know, some type of remonster. Anyways, the, the term is alluding me. Moratorium on certain rezones and certain things because we are getting pretty close to our, completing our rewrite. And so I, I'm just going to, you know, tread a little lighter when these rezones come as we're in the midst of kind of, I think, trying to define a new zoning map. And the last thing I would like to see is a sore thumb in our zoning map that almost looks like a, a, a use variance or a PUD. That's not a PUD because it's pre-existing. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Enright-Randall. Well, it, it is not possible to vote on this tonight. And so the next hearing will be in one month. At our next regular Plan Commission hearing, I encourage the public to attend again and to write if you're not able to attend in public. And after that public meeting of the regular meeting of the Plan Commission, then the commissioners will hear it on a Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m. in the future to be determined. And that, that will be the ultimate deciding body. So I just want to inform the public, there will be one more full public hearing of the Plan Commission. And then the commissioners will hear the case and decide on the case in the future. So please stay tuned. Is there anything you'd like to add, Director Mestrich Allen?
I just wanted to mention, it sounds like just between this hearing and the next hearing as far as coordination with the petitioner, there's a request to see if they would be willing to narrow the list of Agar R uses. Is that just a like head nod? Is that a majority that we would like to see that just in case? And then it sounds like maybe discussing with the Historic Preservation Board of Review about them initiating a HP overlay. That was something that staff had added in the red text just to make sure that if it wasn't the petitioner that initiated the rezone, that they would still have the ability to do that. So we can talk with the HP board about that as well.
If, if you would add the list of the RE 2.5 uses in the packet, that would be helpful.
And the next meeting of the Plan Commission is on June 21st. That will be the final hearing. And our meeting begins at 5:30 p.m. I'm not sure where it will be on the agenda, but we will have a meeting on June 21st at 5:30 p.m. So, yes, Mr. McKim?
Madam Chair, may I just ask one quick question, Steph? I, I guess I wanted to hear the, how the process works as far as the waiver of final hearing because it is in our packet that it says waiver of final hearing requested. So did that request come after it was advertised or how?
So what I looked at was the notice that went to the paper. So because we're statutorily required, it didn't say waiver requested. So I think it was just caught late and that was a staff error, so.
Thank you.
So thank you, everyone, for coming. We're going to have a discussion now about the county development ordinance. You're welcome to stay. Don't feel obliged. But thank you for coming out tonight and for speaking on this important case. Thank you. Yeah, in, well, let's take about a four-minute, five-minute break and we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you. Okay, okay. Oh, that would be cool. Well, thank you, everyone, for your participation in that last case and your good thoughts and good questions and good discussion concerning it. So now we're going to move on to the CDO discussion. And I, I also want to say, I should have said it at the beginning of the meeting, congratulations to Tammy Bearman, who is the new assistant director of planning. And so we're looking forward to hearing from both of you about the new CDO. And you're going to lead us through, I know, a very healthy discussion.
Yes.
President, if I might just weigh in real quickly, I've been away for a while, so it was news to me that you were in your new position when I got back. That was good news. And as somebody who's been associated with the Plan Commission for a number of years, I very much appreciate the fact that we can confidently promote from within, especially at this juncture in the development of the county ordinance. It was a great relief to me and I'm sure other Plan Commissioners share the sentiment that we're not changing horses midstream. So not to say you guys are horses, but you understand the analogy. There's no buck. So anyway, I certainly do appreciate the continuity that we're going to enjoy and thank you for being willing to take the position because uneasy rest of the head wears the crown.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we turn it over to you with confidence that you're going to help us get through this. So take it away.
Yes, definitely. So yes, Tammy and I worked on this a little bit before the meeting today. So we are having a CDO discussion at the regular session. Part of that is because we have had two administrative meetings that weren't able to be held due to quorum requirements. So we do want to try and facilitate these discussions at the administrative meetings just so that we have a little bit more time to discuss and we can leave some of the administrative items to be a little bit more high level or summary. So just so that anyone tuning in on the public, since this is a regular meeting and it's broadcast on CATS and I'll likely be sharing this with people that may have questions about the CDO. Tonight is just to give the Plan Commission and the public an update on where we are at on the CDO. And it's an administrative item, so we're not going to technically be taking any public comment. This is not a hearing and please note that you will get mail notice before this actually goes to a hearing. And if you have any comments or questions, our email and website are on the screen as well. So just to outline some of the goals for tonight, I want to go over, since our February special meeting was the last time as a plan commission, we were able to talk about the CDO. And then I want to go over a few things that we discussed and have edited since the February meeting. So titles of zones, an update on the communities that we're using as a reference point and an understanding just that, you know, staff is on the right track for the current draft of listed uses. And then we have a estimated timeline slash work plan. And then a discussion that I want to talk about is possibly a module three timeline, which I think we can, we can get there with by the end. So just a reminder of where we are at on modules one through three. So we have substantially drafted module one and now we are, we have had a vote to proceed to module two. And so that, what, what we've been focusing on and what's in the packet is the use table. And we have the draft zoning map on the MonroeCDO.com website. And then we've also looked at the definitions for that use table. So there's still some gaps missing and it's not a full, complete draft. And the purpose of breaking it up into modules is just so that we can take this in chunks and hopefully provide the consultants with good feedback and make substantial progress as we go along. So just some updates from the February meeting. Staff went ahead and put together a comparison of the list of existing uses to those of the proposed uses. And remember, we're cutting those down about by half. So we were only going to officially remove two uses by the end. So that is taxi cab stand, which is currently in chapter eight oh two and industrial uses with potentially adverse effects, which is in chapter eight thirty-three, and it does not have a definition. So those two uses are the only two uses that we're officially removing. Everything else has been consolidated, put into definitions or put back into the ordinance. So that's update number one. The other update that we have from the last time is that there was a discussion and what we've put together in the draft that you have in the packet is in a new title for the zoning districts. So we had talked about doing agricultural two point five, forest reserve five, conservation reserve two point five. But we didn't stretch that out to the rest of the residential zones. So that would include rural community one, low density residential point three four, suburban residential one, medium density point two one, high density point one four, urban residential point zero seven. And just to kind of set some ideas of what we want to have discussed. We don't, module three will deal with the minimum lot sizes. So I don't necessarily want to get into the discussion on what the minimum lot size should be for some of these zones. I more so want feedback on whether you like the title of the zones with the numbers behind them. And then we will work on what those numbers should be. But I first want to see whether that is a good direction for us to proceed. And then we will later talk about the minimum lot sizes for those zones. So pausing here, if anyone has any comments on that or I can keep going.
We're going to talk about the actual numbers of the acreage later. Is that it?
Yes, we will. Yes, in full detail.
Yeah, I think it'll just be important to have that noted somewhere on here, what the number represents.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I would like to see it be just using it existing on the screen there. Act two point five A. You know, for acres.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Or AC.
I don't like urban residential anywhere in the county. I, you know, I just.
Point zero seven is what it is. Yes.
Yeah, we, we had to be quiet so that the subtitles disappeared so we can see the screen.
Oh, great.
Okay, no, it's all right. So yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we should be thinking about what all of this means. Especially given information we've been receiving about sewer service to new residential structures. So I think we're going to need to rethink all of this very soon. But anyway.
I would think rural community and urban residential could be one in the same. Rural community, that's really urban residential is an urban or a rural community. So I'm sorry, Mr. McKim.
Well, I thought we were talking about the naming convention here and
Yes.
I can say I, I don't like, I mean, I guess it's fine with those rural, those large rural zones. Those residential zones, I just think that's kind of ugly and I think that's going to be more confusing for the public rather than less confusing. To call something LR point three four, they're going to be like, well, what about, you know, is there also an LR point three five or an LR point three six? Yeah, I, I don't know. I think that that's, that's going to create more problems than it, than it solves. I, I, I don't mind it. Somehow it doesn't bother me as much for the, the fives and the two point five. But those, those odd decimal numbers, it's just, I think it's confusing.
I want to echo that. And I don't know, I, I think the comment with putting AC on the end seems appropriate if we're going to put numbers. I mean, it should be as descriptive as possible, but I think once we get, you know, under one acre or something, you know, at that point, I, I feel like planning is going to be working with them where they already know what the minimum lot size is. I, I, I do agree that having the acreage in the larger zones will immediately be kind of self-identified by landowners. Though anyone under an acre is probably working with planning already to a degree where they know what the minimum lot size is. So that, that's my thoughts.
Commissioner Thomas.
Perhaps, I mean, may I be so cheeky as to suggest that perhaps if we listed something as low density residential, three homes per acre, that that would highlight the fact that this is super high density for the county. This is the county. This is not the city. Medium density, five homes per acre. Medium? That's medium? I mean, to me, that's shocking, right? High density, seven homes per acre, right? If I did my math right, let me look. Yeah. Urban residential, wow, right? That is, maybe that's why this is difficult for us to digest, because this is the county, this isn't the city.
Wait, but wait a minute. Where is the urban residential? Is that Steinsville?
So there is some urban, it's very, very limited, the urban residential that exists. There's one property that's own urban residential in Harrodsburg. And then there's some that is zoned urban residential, I believe, in some of the AFA areas. Or no, not the AFA areas.
Lake Lemon has SR, but there's a lot of lots less than an acre.
Yeah, it's very limited. I think the purpose of the urban residential is to transition from the areas intended for annexation. Those the islands, if you will, those areas are currently zoned residential multifamily fifteen and residential multifamily seven. And so urban residential, since we already have that zone, that could be a transition zone. But again, we can talk a little bit more about what those lot sizes should look like as we get a little bit further on.
I like the rural community, even if urban residential has to be grandfathered in. Because that's the, the idea and the ideal that we're going for with Harrodsburg, Steinsville and Smithville, Lake Lemon. Those are really rural communities. They aren't urban communities.
So staff did think of a sort of a list of pros and cons to consider, but we're really glad that we could hear some of your viewpoints first. So some of the pros is that when you look at the zoning district, you're going to be able to easily tell what the minimum lot size is for the zone. Jerry, I know you're saying to put AC at the end on legal notices. And as people are talking about a zone, it's going to say AG two point five AC. So just think of it as that's going to be how you say what the rezone is going to. And if, you know.
I thought about that after.
Yeah, so if, you know, aesthetically or naming wise, if it's, you know, just keep that in mind. And then it also, I think that the zone names that the Plan Commission has helped to narrow down to, I think, are still illustrative of the character of the area. And I think that that's important just because we do have different areas of the county that are known for forest reserve, agriculture, rural, things like that. Some of the cons though about having the lot size listed next to the zone name that I just want to bring up is that if in the CDO we're going to transition or focus really on minimum buildable area, so areas less than fifteen percent slope that don't have carst areas, that don't have floodplain, that may become a little bit confusing for people if we start saying, well, that's your minimum lot size, not your minimum buildable area. And it could also give people the impression that they might be able to subdivide if they have five acres on AgRR in the rural area on a septic system, because they could have two, two point five acre lots. That won't be the case because they're on septic, so they would need at least 10 acres. So just to give that some, some attention. And then if the minimum lot size ever changes, we would have to update, you know, we may have to update the zoning map if the naming then changes. And then in the more dense zones, you know, having a decimal point could cause some confusion. We thought about that as well. And then just thinking aesthetically, you know, as you're looking at some of these, the naming is, is, can be long if it has a decimal at the end. So is it the consensus? So is it the consensus? I, I heard from Mr. McKim that he did not like the decimals at the end of some of the zones. But I think that also Commissioner Thomas pointed out that maybe those decimals would be revised. And maybe could, could change a little bit the look of it. I guess I'd like to get a sense from the plan commission. You know, do you like the rural zones with the number on it? Or do you like all of the zones with the number at the end? Maybe just a raise of hand if you like, I'll start with the rural zones. Do you like the rural zones with the number on the end of it?
Mr. Pittsburgh had a question, then Mr. Garrett.
Go ahead with this and then I'll ask my question.
Okay.
Garrett has a question. Oh, he was.
Okay.
Okay, that's okay.
That's okay. Zoom hand versus real hand.
Okay.
So what was that vote again? Can you raise that a little bit? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, okay, everyone, okay. And then I didn't get a chance of Jim, did he raise? Okay, Jim raises again. And then what about using that for the residential zones? So the zones that have a decimal, who likes that? Okay, so.
So I, I don't mind the decimal point for the residential zones. I just have a problem with the nomenclature of residential zones rather than the acreage associated with it. So.
Oh, I see. So you're saying that because the word residential doesn't appear with medium density, high density. Is that what you're saying?
No, I just think that there could be some more craft into our, our zoning names. Like rather than residential zones, you know, I'd have to think about it, but there could be another name for residential zones.
I had an idea about that. That's kind of my question. I've never looked really at many other counties. Zoning categories or titles for zones, so I, I don't know how common it is. If you just use a numeric denomination like rural zone one, rural zone two. And people just have to look up what those rural zones mean. But I would suggest though that in. This configuration, that the LR, SR, MR, HR, UR. Each one of those is redundant. Because you're saying residential and they're already into the residential heading. I really think you could go with, and I would begin with the highest density or the lowest density to the highest. So I would begin with residential SR. And then residential MR. Or no, I'd go suburban residential would just become suburban. So the suburban zone. Medium would become medium density, MD. Low density, high density and urban. In, in those categories, so you could just, you know, abbreviate or you can list the word. This is low density. In the residential zone.
Low density countryside you could put in or low density outskirts or low density hinterland. Or something other than, or neighborhood rather than residential. Something, something that distinguishes the fact that a hamlet, you know, or something like that. Something other than residential would be my. You know, we could, with some craft, we could create an identity that would help us get to where we want to be. Did you have a comment?
Yep, so. I, this'll, this'll be a bit of a wrench. Why not residential two point five, residential five? We have to figure out why we have conservation re- reserve and why it's different than ag or R and figure that out. Residential one, residential point three five, res- residential one. I mean, why, or why, why do we have to have? It's residential and there's a minimum lot size. Why, why do we need the other names? So.
There are uses that are.
But that's also. You know what I'm saying? People care about the density, I think, more than the name. And I think we're, and, and again, this is not about whether I agree with what's on here or not. It's just about how we name things. And I think it's, I think it's more confusing to have different names and different numbers. Than it is just to have a name with different numbers behind it and those numbers have a meaning. That's my point. Thanks.
My, my only point to that would be, you just heard a petition this evening that was already two point five. And agro reserve, which is two point five in the definitions and the uses, just like Derek said, are, they're, they're enough to. Kind of tip the scale for, for adjoining property. And I think, I think having equal densities is with, with different uses is perfectly acceptable. But I'm indifferent on it. I mean, I, I, to the extent that really we need to see the definitions and understand the definitions of each one of those before we would say. Because maybe if you saw the definition, you may change agro reserve to two and conservation reserve to three. So the densities would be different, but I don't get hung up on the densities because, you know, most people start in, what's the use gonna be? And then what do I need to implement it? This thoughts, I mean.
No, that's a good point, but the use is all residential, right? But it's varying, but varying conditions on that residential, right?
Not forest reserve, that's not all residential.
Miss President.
Yes, Mr. Stainbrook, sorry, I thought your.
That's all right. Well, I don't want to speak for anyone else, incidentally, but I think Commissioner Thomas made some good points there. I, I, and Margaret, I don't want to interpret for you. But if it isn't your inclination, I think I have sort of a reservation about. Well, just in general, I'm not for doing a lot of building out in the rural county. And just to see residential zones or rural zones. So I, I don't have the same concern about rural that I believe maybe, maybe. Commissioner Thomas has. And I kind of identify even though misconstruing your. Your psychological position, as it were, on, on residential. But, but then Jerry's dealt with some complex and more comprehensive things there about the acreage required. But back again to these decimals in, in what was once called rural zones. Why, why couldn't conservation reserve just be three? And, and agricultural reserve, three, and then forest reserve, five and rural community, one. Why, why do we have to have the decimals there? And then there's all this other, for me, positioning, well, you know, back to the rural, urban thing. Okay, thanks, thanks, Margaret.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Stainbrook. Mr. McKim?
I, I do kind of want to point out, and I'm not suggesting we do this. But I, I wanted to point out the way that the city does their residential districts. They have, they basically had, start out with R one is residential large lot, R two is medium, R three, and then R four. And at least, although you don't know the, the specific acreage required, you do at least, you have kind of a progression. You know that R one is larger lot than R two, which is larger lot than R three. And I'm not suggesting we do it simply because we use the exact same nomenclature, it'd be confusing between the, the city and the county. But I, I, I do like the idea of there being some obvious kind of progression from large lot to small lot. Which, you know, I know you've kind of tried to do that with the nomenclature here, it just might not be quite as obvious.
I, I can see what you're saying, but I would be concerned if we also had forest reserve five. Because then that, that has an acreage number versus.
Yeah.
So it'd be hard to mix them.
True.
But I see. Okay.
I do think however you do it, they should be ordered from, you know, either smallest lot to largest or largest lot to smallest. Having the SR kind of out of order there is, is maybe, is a little confusing.
For me, the fact that it has the same nomenclature as the city is, is not a convenience. It's a problematic, you know, just because. You know, I think that we need to be clear that we're in the county. And even though we're using the same consultants, which I find a little problematic. I, uh, I think that we need to look exactly at these things. For our own identity.
So I just added to the PowerPoint screen, based on what I was hearing, two options. Which was one, just listing S for suburban, LD for low density, then medium density, high density, you, urban density. And then below that was another suggestion. I think I captured just having residential or residential zones, which would be R one for suburban residential, which is one acre. Our point three four, our point two one, our point one four, our point oh seven. So does anyone have any opinions on one option over the other, first option versus the second option?
I kind of like the first option, but it is mine, so I don't say I'm gonna be disposed toward it.
I do too.
Okay, can I do a raise of hands for the first option, the S, L, D, M, D, H, T, U, D, one, two, three, four, five, six? Okay, all right, so majority, okay. All right, thank you. Sorry to belabor that point, but that's helpful. Okay, all right, moving on. So the, the next thing that I wanted to discuss was, we had a discussion at the last meeting. About the communities that were used as reference points for coming up with the use table. And I do want to note that this list is in flux and something that we'll reach out to the consultants to obviously have more of a discussion on. Different ordinances that could be helpful. So there was a question on why using Maryland and Virginia, so both of those areas are near the DC area. And when I went back to those ordinances and found what, what I actually, we were using them for, what was helpful. There was just different things that we were pulling out from each, each list. And actually, it was helpful to see what the comprehensive list of uses are and whether we were missing that use, whether that was helpful or whether we already had that use. So the Montgomery County, we, we saw that that was passed in two thousand and fourteen, so it was relatively new. It utilized that subcategory idea that we found to be helpful and we borrowed that Fairfax County, Virginia. They utilized some color coding for different zoning districts. So in the example before, it would be like rural zones, hamlet or residential zones would be another color, industrial zones could be another color. So using that for more user friendly way of looking through the table. And they also incorporated some aerials for the zoning districts with like the minimum lot size and things like that. So I thought that was super helpful. And then Bloomington's ordinance, we have heard from several stakeholders over the years that it can be confusing. When there's very similar uses to different definitions, one in one jurisdiction, one in the other jurisdiction. So we are trying to avoid some of that language change or language shift between the, the different jurisdictions. Although, you know, if we, if the city has a use that we do not need, we obviously do not need that in our ordinance. But if there's similar uses that are both appropriate in both jurisdictions, we would like to consider and look at what the city has it named. Just so that we don't differentiate for just the sake of differentiating. And then we're also trying to coordinate and review just the fringe areas and the compatibility of those zones on the border districts of the county and the city. As we move forward. And then the other communities that we listed, Carmel, Fishers, Westfield, they all have very recently updated ordinances. And they're Indiana examples, and so we were looking at those for use table examples. And then we were asked to review a few other places like where Cornell is, Ithaca, New York, and Athens, Georgia, also University Town. And we found that Athens was pretty helpful. They, they do have a use table that includes an N for not permitted. So that was an idea that maybe we could utilize moving forward. And then my last question for you is any comments or other cities that you wanted the consultants to consider in the review of the ordinance?
There, there is one that I'd like them to look at because it is the most planned. City, I think in the United States, and that's Sugarland, Texas. I'd like to see what their categories look like.
Commissioner Thomas.
Um, I do like the ideas of colors. I do like the idea of an X or an N or something for not permitted. I think leaving it blank just leaves people to be creative and imagine, imagine all kinds of things. Um, uh, I will say that. I'm not, what's stumping me is where we have the border with the city. If we use the same term, yes, there's less confusion. However, we're not going to define the term the same way probably. So is it more confusing that way? I think one of the things that when we had that joint meeting with members of the city plan commission years ago now. Which is surprising and shocking to imagine, it was pre-COVID, it was PC. We had a discussion about map colors and how those can mirror, city, county can mirror one another a little bit more. Well, they've already done theirs, so I don't, you know, so I don't know how we still feel about that and if that works for us. The other thing is, at this juncture, I think we should not ever talk about AFA again. Because it no longer exists and it's, and it causes trouble. I think we have to consider territorial borders as territorial borders. I don't think we want to get into a guessing game about what's gonna happen in the future. And I think we'd be foolish to do so because we're looking at years and years of a court case before anything's even settled. So we need to proceed as normal. And to me, that means we proceed like this is in the county and it's in the county to stay. And, and if we have to deal with something later, we deal with it later. If they absorb something, they're gonna rezone it. So we just need to think about what we want, I think, for the county as it is now, as it stands now. Whether it's an island or it, whatever, we just have to think this is part of the county, how should it be zoned? So.
Yes, Mr. Pittsburgh.
I, I don't disagree with what you just said, Commissioner Thomas. The one thing I'd add those, in those areas where properties are contiguous with the city zoning. That we do consider that as a factor when we are doing zoning. Because those areas, even though there is no more AFA, we know what areas are contiguous to the city. And have city services, which we can presume going forward. That having city services is a pretty strong indicator that that property will eventually be part of the city. Because we have evidence that, you know, that's what they want. You know, if they enjoy city services, those are areas that. Will be considered for annexation when annexation occurs. That's all I want to say.
I, I'd like to comment on that because as you know, I've been involved with talking to residents around the county. And each of the areas that are joining the city. And they feel bullied by the city, that the city has been quite aggressive about building large apartment complexes. On the edge of the city, that is not a normal way of expansion. And they've done it without coordination, without collaboration, without consultation with, for instance, here. At the county plan commission, there's no member of the city who's present or really who has ever been present. And, and we matter. We matter here in the county. We have our ideas about how we'd like to determine our future, how we'd like to live our lives. We have people who have invested their life savings in terms of how they would like their future to be. And so I would like to think of the boundary of the city and the boundary of the county. And so I would like to think of the boundary of the city and the boundary of the county as though there's an imaginary wall. I don't really think that it really matters to me that they decided to build a 700 unit apartment complex right on the edge of the city, abutting the county with the hopes of an aggressive takeover in the future. To me, that's that was a bad yet one more bad decision they made because they're eliminating all of the opportunities for single family housing in the city. And so I think that we need to think about ourselves, our people, and we need to plan accordingly. Yes, Mr. Enright Randolph?
Yeah, I'm gonna kind of tread lightly here. I want to kind of echo some of the discussion. I I do think that it's absolutely necessary to consider the growth of Bloomington as we look at our zoning and county development ordinance. There has to be some good in there that we can learn to how to integrate and adapt and adopt hopefully in our own ordinances. Also, my main point of chiming in is let's not forget about the town of Elletsville. Let's do that same understanding of the town of Elletsville's growth and how that boundary, permissible boundary adjoins the county's boundary and where we can have smart growth occur. We definitely don't want to put a huge intense commercial or industry use, abutting a very nice residential subdivision that's in the town. The same logic needs to apply with the city.
Anyone else?
Okay, so just to summarize, Jerry, you brought up looking at Sugarland, Texas. Tron, you talked about Oldsville ordinances and zoning maps, very good idea. And then we also talked about just making sure to coordinate with the colors of what the, if if possible, what the city is using and what the county is using. I think we're both going to be using the A I APA's recommended color coordination. So I think that as long as they're following that guideline, then I think we're comfortable with moving forward. That's how we've been proceeding with the draft zone map. Okay. So just to bring everyone up to speed. So we had our last work session on February 24, 2022. And then just a little bit further back to look at how we can proceed with the timeline moving forward. I want to review how long it's taken us to go through each module to date so that it'll inform how we proceed forward, how much time we'll need to proceed forward. So Module one, we took a draft of Module one to the Plan Commission on November 5, 2020. And on January 19, 2021, it was voted to proceed with Module two. And just as a note, Module one can still be edited. It's just been drafted and received public comment. We did do a public engagement in the form of stakeholder meetings. And that was held in the summer of 2020. So since that time period, staff did lead the drafting of the zoning map, and that was done in the time period of about April of 2021. And then we also received a Module two from the consultants in September of 2021, and it took until December 2021 for staff to edit that and put our best foot forward to send that to the Plan Commission. So we've been reviewing a similar iteration of Module two from December to present. And so we are looking at, we have also done some public comment periods. So we had three in person meetings in 2021. We had township trustee meetings with staff and a Zoom meeting for people that did not attend in person public meetings. And then since then, we've also put together a use list comparison with the existing use table, which has been much of the focus to date. So that's just sort of a summary of where we are now. So staff has put together a sort of a work plan idea, but we want to get your feedback on those timelines or you know, mixing up the order, anything like that is all open for review, but we wanted to start with just what we would suggest in terms of timeline and then hearing from you about how you would like us to proceed. So we still want to utilize Plan Commission administrative meetings to the best of our ability. And we think that June and July, we could review case examples of the drafts use table and the draft zoning map. So staff would highlight a few areas, maybe areas that we've had recent rezone discussions and talk about, is this fitting for this area? Or, you know, are there amendments needed to the zoning map? Are there amendments needed to the use table? And then we also want to go through just the list of conditional uses under the use table because the next step will be to start drafting those conditions. And so if we're missing uses, it should be conditional, or we have too many that are conditional. We don't want to waste any time drafting those conditions if they don't need to be drafted. So our thoughts are if we can do a few of those case examples in June and July, that we might be ready to send the consultants those finalized edits in August of 2022. Does that seem reasonable to the Plan Commission?
Yes.
Brief question, Jackie.
It's a little difficult to hear. Yeah, sorry.
Excuse me. So at at the administrative meetings in June and July of 2022, are you saying that we wouldn't have any petitions? We would just focus on these? Or?
I did look at the, I did look at the agenda. They do look pretty light. We also discussed that we could just take questions at those meetings and not do a full presentation because you will hear them at a preliminary hearing and a final hearing if requested.
Just to say.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm okay just to just to keep those meetings for the CDO.
Yep.
I mean, I'm okay with that. I was just wondering what staff was looking at doing.
Yeah, me too.
Support it.
Good idea.
So revised delivery, just so I'm clear, is is for Module two?
So that's the idea that between August 2022 and November 2022, the consultants would actually take those revisions, make those edits and send those back. So we're going to be sort of juggling here with the the other module that we have left, which I want to bring up so we don't have gaps in which we could be working on something and then we're waiting on the consultant to get back to us.
Okay, so we're going to work as soon as we hand this off in August, we'll start working on the other one. They'll get that one back.
Yeah.
So we're still on track for 2023.
I think we can, I think that's what we're attending on. Yes.
Yeah. Our director and our assistant director are expert cat herders.
Yes.
Another question then with with your staffing with are you, you're still short a staff member, correct?
We are. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So one thing that when I was looking at the work plan and status update that the consultants gave us back in 2020, I noticed that Module two, which we're under right now, still includes overlay districts. And so we're going to have them go ahead and start working on that immediately because those are districts that regardless of the zoning map, those can be drafted alongside. So the ECO areas, we're not expecting a whole lot of change to those areas. PUDs, I think that that could be cleaned up. But again, that's its own zone. Lake Lemon watershed was something that we discussed and has been discussed for several years. That is sort of an iteration of the ECO area, but ECO area light, and that's for Lake Lemon area. And then karst features, those types of things could be drafted now. So we're going to be incorporating the consultants now back in to say we 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 have some things that we'd like you to start drafting and working on right away, which is those overlays.
I've got another quick self correct here. We're short two staff members. Is that correct or just one?
Just one.
We're just short one staff member. So is there a need to? I'm just asking, but is there a need to contract more time from the consultant in order to help staff drill through some of this stuff? And we're just throwing it out there, not getting in your stuff, Jeff, with the council, but I mean, if they're short people.
I I think that's a fair.
And I think that we've got a consultant on board that maybe we need to look at asking the, I don't know the process, asking the commissioners and the and the council if they need to be able to leverage that resource. It's going to cost some money to do because they're short staff, so.
What was that, Jerry? An intern, I think we would to fill the lower staff position or to, okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah, so I will go at Jeff.
I guess I would just like to say that in a follow up to what Bernie said, if you, if the staff actually think that it would be, you would get a better product and or make the process more efficient to have some more staff, some more hours with the consultant. I think we ought to consider asking for that. I would certainly be inclined to support that, at least on the on the council, if that would actually make a difference.
Sure.
I mean, you guys have the best idea of what their workload is, how many hours are left on the on the contract and that sort of thing. But I think if you're, if we're not, I guess if, how can I say this? If they're not doing, spending all of the time that you would like them to because of a constraint on the hours on the contract, we ought to look at that.
I think what I would like to do is we have a decent amount of funds left, I think, in the amount of somewhere around $55,000. So I would like to start working on getting those hours in and see where we're at. I would probably wait until that amount was lower to go to the council to to necessitate the hours. But yeah.
And of course, with the vacancies, you may wind up with extra money in the staff lines, which you could then ask for a transfer and not even spend any more money than you had already planned on.
Yes, right. Yeah. So, yes.
Just one question. It's actually about the overlays. Are we working with the stormwater with kind of discussing what they need? Because a lot of the teeth for some of those goals are going to come from this ordinance. So I see you nodding your head, yes. So I just wanted to make sure that I asked that question.
Yes. So in the coordination that the planning department is doing with the highway department, stormwater team, we're meeting monthly also with someone that works with the Friends of Lake Monroe organization, since they've done a data report about the health of the Lake Monroe. So monthly, we meet to go over the stormwater ordinance. And then we're also discussing just how best to allocate some of the chapters or regulations that we have in the planning umbrella over to stormwater or vice versa. So for example, karst, there's a very heavy mathematical calculation under our ordinance that is actually better suited, possibly under the the stormwaters technical standards. And then we would make sure to keep, you know, the setbacks and the use restrictions of karst. So we're going to be able to better streamline between the two ordinances, but try not to have overlap or contradictions, things like that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So the, I think that the overlay districts, with the exception of the Lake Lemon watershed, which will be relatively new. And then I also will put in here that under the category of overlay is the mobile home park chapter. I think that that will take some work. But some of these will not take too much work to edit because they're already in pretty good working order. So we're guessing that that might be a draft delivery that could be in by August. So at that point, August, we could be getting a new draft of the overlays and be sending off the use table and the other version of Module two. So sort of sending them part and getting part back just to keep us moving forward a little bit. So and then, of course, once we get that initial draft of the overlays, we will want to work with the Plan Commission on looking at those. And I do want to bring this up is that you know, we we broke the ordinance into three modules. So I don't take it lightly that I'm now considering breaking it up even further within those modules. But I do want to keep us moving. On the other hand, I could have them draft the overlays. We could wait to get those back, look at those, and then we will already have reviewed the uses and still then incorporate those overlays and just send them back one set of edits instead of bifurcating those. So just some.
I I like that idea because that gets them working on something right now, not waiting for us.
Yeah.
So this would be the PUDs, the ECO. And then if we choose, the karst piece goes to stormwater anyway. And now it's written, so that's good. Um, I think it's a brilliant idea to actually do this and then come back. And once they've returned with it, because it would be before November.
Yeah.
Then we can, we can look at everything together. I think it makes sense. Good idea.
So just some flexibility within those module breakdowns. I don't want to add any confusion or, you know, make it seem like we're looking at the same thing multiple times. We just want to make sure we're proceeding and have things to look at and review while it's being in the consultant's hands and then it's back in the staff hands and things like that. Okay. So then I think that once we can solidify sort of the final edits to the consultants and can get a pretty good draft of Module two back, we will then be looking at proceeding drafting Module three. And I think that we could be asking the Plan Commission sometime around September for a vote of confidence as to what how you feel about Module two, as to whether you feel confident in proceeding to Module three. And that will give us an idea of, we need to go back to the drawing board on Module two, or we can keep going into Module three. And at the point of Module three, we're, you know, that's going to be development standards, parking, landscaping. And then, sorry, that should also say design standards, the second one, lot sizes, setbacks, and then overlays, we discussed as being part of Module two. So it would really be development standards and design standards under this Module three and then setting up engagement for the fall. So.
Well, you and your team have done a great job. Really, you all have done a great job so far. Thanks for, I know we have, I haven't been that easy to, you know, I know that this is difficult. So thank you for all of your guidance throughout this very complicated process.
Yeah, I think we want, I think that we want to just make sure that we are dedicating the time and attention this deserves to get. I think current planning can be the squeaky wheel, but the the long range planning is critical. And so as much as we can reserve time at administrative meetings because they're already scheduled and we can get together and hash out many of these details, I think it will be really well worth the time. And then hopefully we can get into engaging the public. And of course, after even all three of these modules are drafted, we're going to come back to the public again. And we're going to have them engage and it's still open for dialogue, open for change. And then we're going to be looking at in 2023, hopefully getting that edited, best foot forward document into the queue for a hearing.
That sounds great. So that sounds great. Thank you.
Just real quick question. You brought up current planning needs. What are we seeing in terms of petitions? Are we, we were up for a little while. Are we still way up? We tapering off with the economy slowing down? Do we, should we look at a report at the end of second quarter, you know, comparative to where we were last year at this time?
We could, yeah, we could put that together. Our sense is that for the filing deadlines, less has come in. So I do see that we've that means correlating to building permit applications. Usually those are the same level as planning petitions. So if we have less building permit applications, we usually have less planning petitions. And so at least in the last month, we've seen a reduction in the number of things being filed.
Yeah, I know yesterday's property transfers in the paper were huge. It was a full page and then. Yeah, I know yesterday's uh property transfers in the paper were huge. It was a full page and then some, so. And, and I think that's kind of the bellwether for things coming at the plan commission as well. Uh, not always because some of us within city limits, but I just see a lot of property transfers as, you know. But I really think just um so that we appreciate the amount of work that's being done. I like to see those uh year-to-year comparisons.
Okay.
You know, don't spend a tremendous amount of time on it, but if you can pull those numbers up and throw them out, give everybody an idea how underappreciated you really are, you know, so.
Yeah, a report back on building permits and variances. Yeah, we, we could definitely do that.
Right. It's poor dogma waggy's own tail. So you know, if you can demonstrate how much work you guys are doing with uh the staff that you have, being some new, some veteran, it's, it's always a good thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it'll help inform too. If we have a lot of variances, we can hone in on that in the long-range planning too. So it's, it's helpful. Yeah. Tammy, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Okay.
And.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else. I just wanted to really hash out the updates and the, the proposed timeline. And then to tell you that please come to the administrative meetings. We're going to have some work to do.
Okay, we'll get there. Dave, do you have any uh? Anything for?
I do not.
Okay. The most popular guy in the room. Thank you. So is, is there in a motion to adjourn? Okay, objections? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of the night. Jim, take care. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Good night.